Of Monday, May 9, 2022. Happy belated Mother's Day to everyone and her moms out there. So let's, so pursuant to government code section 54953, members of Daily City Council staff will participate in this meeting via teleconference. Members of the public are encouraged to watch the meeting via live stream on our Daily City YouTube channel at HTTPS colon backslash backslash WWW dot YouTube dot com backslash Daily City Video Meetings or the city meeting, cities agenda website at HTTPS colon backslash backslash WWW dot DailyCity.org slash agendas or on local channel 27 on Comcast. So with that, let's go ahead and we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Ms. City Clerk, if we could please have roll call, please.
Mr. Brian Ventura. Ms. D. Giovanni.
Present.
Ms. Manalo.
Present.
Mr. Sylvester.
Glenn Sylvester, present.
Dr. Rod.
Present. Okay. We have a few presentations today and we'll begin with proclaiming May 2022 as wildfire preparedness month. And we have Battalion Chief Matt Powers from North County Fire Authority. So whereas last year California experienced 8,835 wildfires burning two and a half million acres in the state. And whereas 306, 160, 3,629 structures were damaged or destroyed by wildfires last year in California. And whereas each year more people moved into wildland urban interface areas, increasing the need to raise awareness to our citizens on how they can protect their property from wildfire losses. And whereas Zone Haven has been adopted as a countywide tool to assist with informed evacuations during wildfire. And we encourage know your zone before an emergency arises. And whereas the North County Fire Authority encourages fire safe behavior by all who live, work, and recreate throughout the city of Daly City. And whereas each of us can do our part to prepare for wildfire emergencies by taking steps to make effective changes to our homes and landscapes to reduce the risk of wildfire. And whereas if we work together collaboratively with awareness, we can remain strong and resilient. Now therefore, I, Dr. Roderick Dos Magwal, mayor and mayor and members of the city council of Daly City hereby proclaim May 2022 as wildfire preparedness month. Encourage all Daly City residents to increase their knowledge and awareness of proper safety measures to protect themselves from the devastating effects of wildfires. I'd like to open this up to any of my colleagues that, or that's my bad. We have Chief Matt Powers here to accept the proclamation.
All right, honorable City Council, thank you again so much for this proclamation. So wildfire season is now year round, as you all know. Firefighters are deployed certainly comes with their risks and challenges by assisting those with devastating loss and protecting those from further potential damage. These firefighters often are gone on strike teams for weeks, taking away from their own and their family's lives to really help others. We again really appreciate the proclamation recognition from the Daly City City Council. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Battalion Chief Matt Powers. We have a few of our members that would like to say something started with Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
I believe Councilmember Manalo was first. Mayor.
Okay. Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's okay, Councilmember Di Giovanni, I think you were up first, go ahead.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, hi, Matt. We all know that the beginning of this year and how it's exacerbated and that there's a lot of measures in place. And that how people can find out how and what to do. I remember seeing that now that new thing you were talking about Zone Haven. So in the educational component of it, I know that we need to be supportive and make sure that even the people up in our different areas like Southern Hills and brush fires that you guys are actively thank you, working with the residents to try to tell them about pulling back the brush. And you're right, always risking lives. And we already know the devastation from last year. And the forecast doesn't look that grateful for our seasonal with the climate change. So I thank you and everyone with our North County Fire and all the firefighters across the state. I mean, it's one battle after the other and it seems like it gets earlier if I'm correct. And it gets longer and many more brush fires in between. So it doesn't go unrecognized and you guys are true, true heroes for trying to save lives, saving property. But as residents, need to do their part as well. And thank you very much for all you do. It's really heartfelt. So thank you, Matt.
Great, thank you. Thank you so much.
Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to say thank you to our Daly City firefighters, the North County Fire Authority for your relentless support and courage to ensuring our communities are safe, especially during the drought season that is ahead of us. You know, as we approach wildfire preparedness month, it's so important that the work that you do around education awareness and really keeping our community safe. So I just wanted to say thank you very much for all the hard work and courageous acts you all do to save our communities. Thank you.
Thank you, our pleasure.
I don't see any other hands raised, but from myself to North County Fire Department. I just want to say thank you as well. I think a lot of times there is a lack of education in terms of how we could prevent simple things that can cause huge brush fires. And echoing my fellow council members, I think that these are, these are things that have a certain sense of urgency because small things like flicking a cigarette into an area or doing small things like that can blaze a whole section of fire up and down the state or even the most vulnerable places in Daly City that has a lot of brush. As what Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni said about in like Southern Hills, which I think is one of the most sensitive areas for brush fire. So thank you again for our Daly City residents that are watching at home, please stay educated on these matters and educate yourself on what can start some of these brush fires that can start very, very easy, especially with our unpredictable weather conditions due to climate change. Thanks again. Thank you. Thank you so much, Battalion Chief Matt Powers. I appreciate all the hard work that you do for our community. Okay, moving along, we have another proclamation. So proclaiming week of May 15 through 21st, 2022 as Emergency Medical Services Week. And we love Matt so much, he's going to come by and take this proclamation as well.
It's a busy month for us, yes.
Yes, it is. So whereas Emergency Medical Services prehospital is a vital public service. And whereas the North County Fire Authority is ready to provide lifesaving, lifesaving prehospital care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency prehospital care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate for those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas Emergency Medical Services and prehospital care has grown to fill a gap by providing important out of hospital care. And whereas Emergency Medical Services prehospital care system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, firefighter paramedics, private paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, prehospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, and trained members of the public and other out of the hospital medical care providers. And whereas the North County Fire Authority engages in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas this last year, Emergency Medical Services continue to face with unprecedented health and safety challenges due to the COVID-19 pandemic, which resulted in monumental changes in everyday procedures. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of North County Fire Authority and Emergency Medical Services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, Dr. Roderick Dos Magwal, mayor and members of the city council do hereby proclaim the week of May 15 through 21st, 2022 as Emergency Medical Services Week in Daly City with the EMS Strong theme, EMS Rising to the Challenge, and encourage the community to observe and honor those who respond to medical emergencies in our communities. Right? So with that, we have Matt again.
All right, great. Honorable councilmembers, thank you again so much for this recognition. It really means a lot to us. I mean, these are like the unsung, you know, heroes that are out there, you know, protecting the medical, emergency medical needs of the county. It's a team approach, you know, we cannot do this without the support of local organization, you know, city councils, Emergency Medical Services Agency in the state of California, the law enforcement, you know, emergency medical dispatchers, the hospital personnel, et cetera. But really, these men and women within the North County Fire Authority, you know, serving the city of Daly City worked tirelessly, especially through COVID, making sure that the community's emergency medical services needs have been met timely with grace and quality. So again, we really appreciate the proclamation and the recognition for all of the work that our people do and the recognition from the Daly City City Council. It really means a lot to us. So again, we really appreciate the proclamation recognition. Thank you so much.
And we have some members of the city council to share some thoughts. Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Matt, again, thank you. I mean, like you were saying, the whole list of everybody that responded in COVID-19, which is still COVID. When, when you respond to emergencies like that, you don't know if this, you just go ahead and respond. And the percentages of the high COVID rates, especially in the beginning, being exposed all the EMS, all the hospital workers, yourself and everyone that responded did not flinch. You're right, timing is everything and you didn't even stop the whole time. And you guys did it tirelessly, not even knowing if you were the one being exposed or you're taking it back to your own families as well and risking your own lives. So, and it became in many forms, but it doesn't go without recognized. And I know that a percentage of our calls are emergency calls and for like medical and that it's either the, you guys work in tandem with our PD as well that a couple of times have been on the scene and which is great that you guys work together, maybe working on CPR for someone or that it's already dropped. But your timing of getting to the scenes is impeccable, especially when we had, we were lacking our E95. But now more than ever, the pandemic still continues. People don't realize that, but there's still emergency calls that people don't know every day. And you guys respond in a timeless manner and very, very humbled. You have saved so many lives. Even when you get a call for the dialysis patients, you always go, like you said, they go with grace. Go with grace because that's what you do and appreciate everything. And please give my love and appreciation and gratitude to everyone. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Will do. Thank you.
Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mayor. Chief, I'd like to commend you and the continuous work of the North County Fire. What's special about this proclamation is you've given acknowledgement to the various organizations and the community. And you know, what first comes to mind, I just think of the training that you provide, especially in CERT, C E R T, which I think is a very integral part of our community. It's like a saying, teach one, train one. And thanks to all of you and the awareness to the others involved. As a collaboration, you are definitely a force multiplier. So thank you for everything that you do. Thank you for everything that you continue to do. I think it's very important and kudos to the community and all the organizations involved, whether it's CERT, Neighborhood Watch, CPR training and et cetera. So I just wanted to put that out there. Thank you so much.
Our pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn. Councilmember Glenn Sylvester, Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I am echoing my colleagues on Emergency Medical Services Week. Thank you to all the personnel who saved the lives of so many from young to old. You know, you are our amazing heroes in our community. I've seen so many times, even with my elder neighbors, you know, where you've come to rescue them and, and really save them at crucial life moments. And so with deep appreciation, thank you, thank you, thank you. And in my first language, the Galug Salamat.
Thank you. We've got an amazing group of people that take care of everyone.
Thank you.
Again, thank you again, Matt, and to the whole North County Fire. I grew up with, I think my whole, most of my family are emergency medical staff. I decided to go a different route, but like I'm saving lives in another way. But everything that you all do, like I came across an interview that I had that I did with my mom. And it was Mother's Day yesterday and she'd always say that, you know, I don't know anything else but being a nurse or I don't know anything else but being a firefighter or I don't know anything else but learning how to serve other people. And I think when you're in these positions, there's this something in your own nature that is connected to our community. Where if people need help, you're out there to provide that, that help and that care. So from the bottom of my heart, from, and the cities, thank you so much for the work that you do.
We'll pass it off. Thank you so much, Ms. Mayor.
Right. Let's see, are you up next again? Just joking. Okay, so moving on to item number three. Proclaiming May 2022 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. We have Joseph Batista from Legacy Filipino Martial Arts. And here we have the proclamation. So whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month is a month to celebrate and pay tribute to the contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Americans to American history, society, and culture. And whereas Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month originated in a congressional bill in June of 1977, on March 28, 1979, President Carter issued Presidential Proclamation 4650, proclaiming this week, beginning on May 4th, 1979, as Asian Pacific American Heritage Week. And whereas on May 1st, 2009, President Obama issued Presidential Proclamation 8369, proclaiming May 2009 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month. And whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders compromise many ethnicities and languages. And they, and their many achievements embody the American experience. And whereas Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders are leaders in all aspects of American life, government and industry, science and medicine, the arts and armed forces, education and sports. And whereas AAPIs are one of the fastest growing ethnic populations in the nation with more than 20 million Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders in the United States, approximately 59,716, 100, or 16,000 Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders in the city of Daly City, which consists for 58.2% of the population in the city. Whereas the Daly City community has benefited through the cultural richness, diversity, and generosity of its local Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders with its vast diversity of languages, religions, and culture traditions that continue to strengthen the fabric of American society. Now therefore, I, Dr. Roderick Dos Magwal, mayor and members of the city council of the city of Daly City do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Asian American and Pacific Islander Heritage Month in Daly City to celebrate and pay tribute to the contributions of Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders to American history, society, and culture. And today we have Joseph Batista from Legacy Filipino Martial Arts. So Joseph, if you want to say a couple of words, feel free.
Oh, hello. Can you hear me? Everybody hear me?
Yes, I hear you.
Yes, hi. Yeah, I think this was an awesome proclamation that has happened. I'm not exactly sure what else can be added. I think, you know, super honored that you asked me to be part of this. And you know, we always just try to do what we can in the best interest of the community as a whole while at the same time preserving our roots and our historical context.
Thank you, Joseph. I think we have members of our council that I'd like to say a couple of words. So we have Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
I was so pleased to see your name on the proclamation because I remember, I think it was not too long ago, correct me if I'm wrong, you wrote something a really long, not too long on your Facebook, but it was like a little bit about you, I think you were explaining about the martial arts and what have you. And then it was, you're giving people the education, especially someone that knows about martial arts, but there's a different aspect coming with the Filipino aspect of it to let, for the introduction. And you were very clear and you were explaining it with, from your heart. And then I want, I wanted people to, if you repost that, it was, it was written beautifully. But you probably don't even know that you wrote, you wrote it beautifully, but you did. And it was easily to get it out to all of us that want to share the cultures who are not as familiar with the culture, but we are. And the commonality and the beautiful, as it said in the proclamation, I like that it said fabric. Because fabric is definitely the weaving, the weaving of all these fabrics and the beautiful diversity of even the Asian community within our daily, own Daly City, much less outside of this beautiful AAPI. It consists of so many. And that if each one preserved a piece of that fabric and that thread of their ancestors with their threads and brought it to the table to share with others, I think there would be a great understanding, a great peacefulness and lots of love that would come with that threading. And I think it'd be, it's so beautiful anyway. So thank you. And I was happy. And thank you, Mayor. It was nice to see his name on here and wishing you all the best. And we're so blessed to have you in the community. And again, you really don't realize the people that you touch and who's really watching. But I want to let you know that I, I was reading and watching and, and very heartfelt because I know I could feel that through you and what you do. You're not doing it just to do it, you're doing it because you love it and you're, that was your purpose. So thank you very much. And thank you for being here in the community. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni. We have Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And it's so great to see you again, Joseph. And big congratulations to your new addition as well, for our future legacy. You know, as Asian Pacific American and Pacific Islanders Month, really what you do is to teach and bring culture to the next generation. That is so amazing. And even as older adults, right, as adults, learning what our history, our, our, our culture and bringing that to the forefront with so much passion and really bringing on this cultural movement. So thank you. You know, through martial arts that has been embedded in generations within our Filipino culture. And also with what you do, you, you just do your community service, like you mentioned. And I will never forget how you've been in partnership with, you know, the Filipino Bayan Han Resource Center and just giving in that way. And not only within the Daly City community, but the Bay Area as a whole, you know? I, and also during the height of stopping anti-Asian hate, your organization stepped up not only in Daly City, but in ways to young women, to the elders, to young children feeling safe in their communities. So when you think about, you know, culture and pride, it starts with our young people so that they can have that confidence, that self-determination to be that as they become our leaders in the future. So it's amazing to see that Legacy Filipino Martial Arts has a home in Daly City from Escavo da Anta now. It is your rebirth as you make that home in Daly City. But I just look forward to seeing how many more youth and families you touch because it's just, it transcends, it really does. Like, oh, you know, I gotta bring, you know, my daughter here and make sure she goes to your classes. And you just hear that, right? And to have that ability to have those classes. I know that when I was younger, those was not, they were not available. So it's, it's a huge cultural asset that we have you in Daly City. So thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Justin Manalo. We have Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Bautista, over the years, I've seen you and we've talked on many occasions. And I have to say, this is a proud moment for recognition of what you do and what you inspire to do. I can see by your actions and that of the group that when I look, I see the amount of respect, which is incumbent upon Filipino culture and family, and especially for the OGs. And when I see the OGs training, but yet I look at the youth discipline, which I think is definitely inherent because it shows concentration. And there are many types of martial arts. And in some areas of martial arts, the information and the skills are kept hidden. They don't want folks to become too good and not knowing all that they can, but not necessarily with you. So once again, kudos, I would like to give you an acknowledgement because you said something at the beginning. And what you said was in the best interest of the community. I think that is very, very important because learning about the culture and this is not just for one culture, but it's an education to those who are not of the Filipino culture. And they come to see that the world is such a big place. And, but keep doing what you're doing and I wish you the best of luck. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. Thank you, Joseph, and to Legacy Filipino Martial Arts. When we were thinking about like who we could honor and I was thinking about, I, I had the, I had the privilege to do a workshop with you all at the first Filipino, Philippine X Wellbeing Youth Conference. at the first Filipino, Philippine X Wellbeing Youth Conference a couple of weeks back. And, um, it was funny because we had like friends of mine that were walking by like, hey, better take it easy on the mayor. But one thing that I, um, learned about being in that workshop and also just seeing you all practicing, um, at your studio is this idea of, you know, this Philippine martial arts isn't art, but you go beyond the art. Right? You teach about the history, the culture. And that's the one thing that's so important for many Filipinos and non-Filipinos to learn. Because a lot of times we see the martial arts as something cool, right? As, you know, as a kid growing up, um, I watched Bruce Lee and I thought it was so cool. Like, oh my God, this guy is so cool. He do these kicks. He looks so muscular. When I grow up, I want to be just like him. But then there was no context for it. And I think that's what you do for Filipino martial arts is you provide that content. You probably provide that context of how did Spanish colonialism play a role in terms of adapting, shifting, changing, transforming the art of Filipino martial arts. And so when I see that, you also stepped up and adapted to the, what was going on in terms of what was happening in our community. So during, and to echo Councilmember Justin Manalo, when you stepped up, you and your group stepped up to educate, train elders, women on how to protect themselves, it serves as a form. And, you know, I'm wearing this, uh, green tank along with my colleagues here for Mental Health Awareness Month. And learning this Filipino martial arts does something for people's wellbeing because it provides the confidence to protect themselves. It gives them the empowerment to go out there and be like, if something else happens, I could use this pen as a way of self-defense. So from the bottom of my heart, um, thank you so much. One of these days I'm going to be a continuous student because I got hooked, um, after that one class and, hopefully, if I have enough time in my crazy schedule, I would love to start practicing and studying Philippine martial arts. Just come full circle with, you know, what I do at my other jobs in terms of teaching Philippine history and Philippine American history. So thank you so much, Joseph, and Philippine martial, Filipino martial, or Legacy Filipino Martial Arts.
Thank you all. Thank you all.
Thank you so much. Okay. So moving ahead, uh, to the approval minutes, for the regular meeting of April 25th, 2002.
Mayor, we have one more proclamation.
Oh, we have one more proclamation. Oh, there you go. I'm all skipping ahead. I crossed out the wrong number. Thank you, Leilani. We have number four proclaiming week of May 15th through the 21st, 2022 as National Public Works Week. And we have Richard Chu here to accept the proclamation. So whereas May 15th through 21st, 2022 is celebrated as National Public Works Week. And whereas National Public Works Week is a celebration of the dedicated public works professionals who provide and maintain the infrastructure and services collectively known as public works with the 2022 theme of ready and resilient. And whereas the public works professionals focus on infrastructure, facilities and services that are of vital importance to sustainable and resilient communities and to the public health, high quality of life and wellbeing of the people of City of Daly City. And whereas these infrastructures, facilities and services cannot be provided without the dedicated efforts of public works professionals who are engineers, managers and employees at all levels, who are responsible for rebuilding, improving and protecting our nation's transportation, water, wastewater and stormwater treatment, public buildings, parks and other structures and facilities essential for our citizens. And whereas it is in the public interest for the citizens, civic leaders and children in the City of Daly City to gain knowledge of and maintain an ongoing interest and understanding of the importance of public works and public works programs in the respective communities. And whereas the health, safety and comfort of this community greatly depends on the efforts and skills of dedicated public works employees. And whereas so long as the design, construction, operation and maintenance of these facilities work smoothly, the people behind the scene are often forgotten. Now therefore, I, Dr. Roderick Dos Magbuwal, Mayor and the members of the City Council of the City of Daly City do hereby proclaim May 15th through the 21st, 2022 as National Public Works Week in the City of Daly City and call upon all residents and civic organizations in the community to pay tribute to our public works professionals and to recognize the substantial contributions they make to protecting our health, safety and quality of life. So Mr. Chu, congratulations. If you'd like to share some words.
Yes, thank you, um, Honorable Mayor and members of the City Council. Here with me tonight is Assistant to the Director of Public Works, Mr. Jeff Fornasi, who oversees the operations at the Corporation Yard, which include Facilities Division that oversee the operations and maintenance of all Daly City facilities. Also the Streets Division, uh, that maintains city streets, sidewalks, signs, uh, streetlights, traffic signals. The Parks Division, uh, that maintain all of Daly City's parks, uh, tot lots and all landscaping at all city facilities. Uh, and then also, uh, our Fleet Services that maintain all of the city's vehicles and equipment. In addition to the Corp Yard operations, um, I also have the Engineering Division, who is responsible for overseeing the city's capital improvement program, reviewing private development and also, uh, going after, uh, grant, uh, funding opportunities. And last but not least, um, the Public Works Administration staff that definitely keep, uh, public works running smoothly. It, it truly is an honor for, um, for us to accept this proclamation on behalf of all the men and women in public works. They are the ones that deserve the recognition and make, uh, people like Jeff and I look good. Uh, as mentioned in the proclamation, this year's theme is ready and resilient. Uh, while being ready and resilient is the makeup of public works profession, it truly became apparent during these last couple of years where public stuff, uh, work staff continued to provide quality service and safety to the, all the residents of Daly City as well as city staff, while still trying to keep themselves and their families healthy. I would also like to, um, recognize my colleagues in the Department of Water and Wastewater Resources as water supply, wastewater collection and treatment are also within the umbrella of public works. Uh, at this time, I'd like to, uh, turn it over to Jeff Fornasi for, for a few words. Jeff?
Thank you, Richard. Uh, thank you, Mayor and members of council. It's an honor to receive this proclamation and to be part of the Daly City Public Works team. The men and women who are part of the Public Works team work endlessly to ensure city infrastructure and assets are safe and in good working order. And, and like the proclamation stated, the theme this year is ready and resilient. The thing that comes to mind for me is, uh, based on this theme, is that 90% of the time when we get calls after hours, midnight, street light down, I make two, three phone calls and I can have someone out there and making repairs within an hour. And, um, and, and that is pretty, um, apparent throughout the division. Anytime you need to get ahold of someone, um, and to get a response, you know, outside of work, normal working hours, the men and women of the Public Works Department are ready and, and they're resilient in the fact that they can work through all kinds of different weather and, and situations to, to make sure that the, uh, infrastructure and, and the residents are, are safe. So thank you very much. We really appreciate it.
Thank you. We, um, Mr. Chu and Mr. Fornasi, we have, um, comments from our council. We have Councilmember Pamela DiGivani.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Chu and Fornasi. It also has to do with leadership. But, um, and I like how you, uh, you always are humble. And thank you for Tom Picalati as well. Like you said, in the wastewater, they play partners. So when people don't realize, wow, wow, uh, some of us are sleeping, there's emergencies going on across our city. And that title says it all, ready and resilient, going out at all hours. And as you spoke, um, Jeff, they, they respond right away. It's not like saying, oh, I'm not coming in or whatever. And people in the history of the public works that we never got back. And I, I just want to let people know the same amount of workforce that these people are working harder than they did before. And hopefully one day we'll be able to put that back together to where I know they, they, they don't never complain because they're so amazing women and men. But we need to somehow, we'll get there and make sure that each one in engineering and everyone else, they feel that support. And I don't want them to feel like they're ever worked and that they work as a team, which is I like. I've seen it everywhere I go. Whether it's at the parks or whether it's, uh, stormwater, something's happening down the road. You could see them working as a team and we have impeccable, but they need to know that they are appreciated and that we, the public loves them and just to turn on the water or, you know, assume that our sidewalks are good, our streets are great. And that doesn't happen, you know, without these people. And, um, I like how you always humbly, you know, recognize your employees. That's a, it's a big part of it and it's a big team. So please give all of our love and gratitude. And, um, especially during COVID. COVID was a big, big, big stressor on them. When they were out picking up things on the corner, I mean, they were being exposed to who knows what. We had no idea. And they have families at home, just like both of you. And that was a big challenge. And that they never stopped. They never stopped yet through all that. And that was pretty dangerous. So safety and their wellbeing, but at the same time, they were being exposed to, uh, COVID as well. So I want people to know that, but they never stopped. They kept going because they were public services and this is what we're here for. And that's true dedication and commitment to all of us in our community. So please think them all, everywhere, streets, parks, engineering, I mean, they, they do everything. So, um, Corp Yard, you name it, they're always busy, the fleets, cars breaking down, cars being maintained. People, so people don't know this, we have a lot of cars, they're getting pretty old now. So they keep trying to get to keep them going and our fire trucks, everything, our PD cars, everything. And some of them are getting there, up there in age, but we'll get there, we'll get to all this together and appreciate their patience. Glad they're okay. And thank you for your leadership and to their work. Thank you so much. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Pamela DiGivani. We have Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I just wanted to say once again, thank you so much for, uh, your, uh, leadership, Dr. Chu, Mr. Fornasi. You know, when you, you said it, when you think about the parks and, I mean, uh, Mr. Mayor, um, said it, Dr. Rod, like, you know, when our parks are maintained, the streets are maintained, um, it's really through, um, the amazing workforce that, that really care about, um, how our city functions and how it looks, right? And how, um, it is for the community. Um, and I just want to say I'm extremely proud of all the workers that do a tremendous and impeccable job and being on the forefront pre-pandemic, during the pandemic. And when I pass by a, a park or so, um, I definitely see how well-kept it is. And, um, seeing so many children utilize it. And, um, it's just, it's just something special to know that the workforce, uh, is so dedicated. And it's a reflection of, um, our city. And so, um, to each and all the workers that give so much, put their dedication and time in hearing the fast response, um, from, from your commentary, Mr. Fornasi. It, it just shows, um, how much these workers care. And to me, um, as a resident, as a council member, um, I greatly appreciate, um, all of that hard work and dedication because it is seen throughout the city. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. We also have Councilmember Glenn Sylvester.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mr. Chu, I first wanted to start off by saying in all the years that I've been on council, I think, uh, at the beginning when, uh, you started to speak, I saw a smile on your face. And I've never seen that before. And, uh, it shows me that you're a human. Because, uh, there you go, you just smiled again. And, uh, uh, I'm glad to see that. I had no idea of the various areas that you covered as to what you oversee to include Mr. Fornasi. You know, I'm very familiar with what Mr. Fornasi does. I think of Tom Picalati and other department heads. And within the past, I've always provided some questions. And the questions I am, am, I'm, I'm amazed as to, uh, when they were directed to you, you had an answer. I commend you for being able to contact the appropriate persons when a question is asked to help, uh, you get the answer. I don't expect you to know everything, but I do expect, and what you have done is utilize the resources and your staff in your arsenal to obtain answers, similar to, uh, the city manager. So I'm very, very impressed with that. What I liked about, uh, your humbleness is the team concept. There is no I in the word team. And you definitely portray that. And I think that is very, very important. Staff is who makes you look good and the rest of your directors. And it shows that you can get things done. But after saying all that, out of all the different departments that you handle, what, uh, stands at the top of my list is our critical infrastructure on streets. I've learned about slurry seal. And I am so, uh, I'm just amazed as to how Daly City's streets look and how they are maintained and kept up, especially during the slurry seal projects through, uh, the CIP. And it makes Daly City a great, great space. You can drive to some of these other cities in San Mateo. The streets do not look like Daly City. So kudos to you on that. I think it's very, very important. I appreciate your leadership and, uh, keep up the great work. Thank you so much, Mr. Chu, for being who you are and being a part of Daly City. Thank you.
I just want to echo my fellow council members. I just want to say thank you to Mr. Chu, Mr. Fornasi, for the work that you all do. When we talk about, uh, public works, uh, you know, it's almost, and, and I think I said in the past, like, I didn't, I didn't realize the work that public works do until I, I got into council. And I, I don't think, um, the residents see the, the type of work that you all do because we think of the work that you all do as, as clockwork. It's like we don't, the heart doesn't have to explain itself on what it does. Right? And that's what public works does is that it's expected to do what it's supposed to do and it's staying ready and resilient. And all these small things, from the slurry seals to the clean parks, to all these small things, they all add up. And I just want to say thank you because a lot of times we never say thank you, um, for all the small things that you all do. And from the bottom of my heart, I just want to say thank you to you all and to the whole team for public works. And thank you for keeping Daly City, Daly City and giving us smooth streets, clean parks and keeping Daly City aesthetically nice. I appreciate you all. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay. Now I think I'm on the right track here. So, um, looking at the approval of minutes for the regular meeting of April 25th, 2022.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have first and second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Okay. Approval of the agenda. And I get a motion to approve the agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second?
Yeah, first and second. All those, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. Other? Councilmember Pamela DiGivani?
Yeah, actually it'll be real short. I just want to pull item number 11 because it's happy news. Yeah, actually, it'll be real short, just want to pull item number 11, because it's happy news. Um, it's, it's about receiving a grant.
Okay.
Thank you.
Great. Um, are there any other items I'd like to be pulled from the consent agenda?
With the sec, with the exception of item number 11, I move that we approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a first, we have a second. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay, so we have agenda item number 11, accepting and appropriating a grant from the state of California for a book-to-action program, Mutual Rescue.
Hello, good evening, I'm Shayla with the library. Thank you for providing this opportunity to tell you about um, a small library services and technology act grant that we received recently for a book-to-action program. Um, so this spring, we are um, inviting the community to read um, Carol, Carol Novello's Mutual Rescue. It's about how adopting homeless animals can also save you. So um, we will be hosting a um, event with the author Carol Novello um, on May 17th. It'll be um, virtual, so easy to attend. And we also will have a film screening coming up in the month of June with our films in the series Mutual Rescue. And we're encouraging everyone in the community to share their own stories of rescue, how, how it's impacted their lives. And we'll be doing our projects with um, families to paint photo, uh, paint portraits of their pets. And we'll be having an art show at the War Memorial Library um, in June. So if you'd like a copy of the book, Mutual Rescue, you can pick one up at any of the libraries or find us when we're out and about in the community.
And Shayla, how did, thank you very much Shayla, it's exciting. And how do they find out about all the events?
So they can find out on our website, we have all of the events on our calendar. Or if you come into any of the libraries and pick up a copy of the book. We also have a brochure, which contains all the information about the program and the various components of it.
Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Not a problem.
I got excited about the talk. It's a, it's a free book and then everybody loves this book.
Right.
Especially when mental health, they were speaking about mental health, right? It's exciting.
Great, thank you. I will open up the floor to my other colleagues. Uh, Shayla, thank you for always doing your amazing job and thank you, everybody um, in the libraries for all that they do. So with that. Can I get a, a motion to approve this uh, agenda item? Number 11, accepting appropriating a grant from the state of California for a book-to-action program, Mutual Rescue.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have first by Councilmember Pam De Giovanni and a second by Councilmember Glenn Sylvester. All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Thank you. Moving down to public hearings, item number 14, introduction of ordinance for military equipment policy. We have Captain Cameron Christensen.
Good evening, Mayor, can you hear me? Great. Um, good evening, Mayor Dawson Ball and council members. For your consideration, this evening, staff is presenting an introduction of ordinance adding chapter 9.56 regarding the police acquisition and use of military equipment as required through a California Assembly Bill 481. Staff is recommending the council conduct a public hearing and introduce the attached ordinance adding chapter 9.56 to the Daly City Municipal Code adopting a military equipment use policy for the Daly City Police Department. On September 30th of 2021, Governor Newsom signed California Assembly Bill 481 into law. And the provisions of the bill were codified in the California Government Code. The associated assembly bill and government codes were attached to the staff report and are available through the Police Department website for reference. On April 11th, council set tonight, May 9th, 2022, during the regularly scheduled council meeting as the time and place for the first reading and public presentation of the ordinance, which would adopt the military equipment policy for the Police Department. On April 8th, 2022, the draft military use policy, draft ordinance and related documents were posted on the city's website and made available to the public 30 days prior to the public hearing in accordance with state law. AB 481 requires the Police Department obtain approval of its governing body through the adoption of a military equipment use policy by ordinance at a regular meeting held pursuant to specified open meeting laws, prior to taking certain actions relating to funding, acquisition, or use of military equipment as defined. The bill allows the governing body to approve the funding, acquisition, or use of military equipment within its jurisdiction, only if it determines the military equipment meets specified standards as outlined in the statute. For this meeting, the Police Department is only seeking approval of the draft ordinance and policy for current equipment in use. We are not requesting any additional equipment outlined in the legislation. Any future purchases or acquisitions applicable to the statute will be brought to council for approval prior to use. This legislation applies to all California law enforcement agencies seeking to continue use of what the statute defines as military equipment. Agencies with defined equipment acquired prior to January 1st, 2022 must commence the approval process prior to May 1st of 2022 and complete the approval process with one, within 180 days or cease use of the equipment until approved. The Police Department initiated our approval process by creating and posting the draft ordinance and policy on April 8th of 2022, and then setting time and place during April 11th, 2022 meeting with proposed adoption of the ordinance at the May 23rd, 2022 regular city council meeting. San Mateo County agencies collaborated in developing consistent ordinance and policy content specific to agency need and equipment. While there are slight differences representing individual agencies' specifics and format, the primary content followed the respective statutes intended through the legislation. Daly City staff developed the draft ordinance, the military equipment use policy following the same standards to include all requirements outlined in the statute. Agencies in San Mateo County are in different stages of the approval process, but comparable sized agencies have received initial approval through presentation for their ordinance and policy and are pending adoption of their ordinance at a future meeting. The equipment available for use by the Police Department is outlined in an attachment to the military equipment use policy in Lexipol. The equipment list describes at a minimum the specifics of the items, intended use, quantity possessed, fiscal impacts, and the associated training for use of the equipment, all as required by the statute. The equipment list listed for use by the Police Department is standard for law enforcement agencies and is intended to provide department options to effectively address critical incidents with the ability to de-escalate and protect all of those involved. The Police Department does not have any equipment provided by the military or from related surplus programs, and the equipment possessed and in use is not equipment specifically designed for military use. The Police Department has and intends to abide by all of the associated requirements for the statute, which includes annual reporting to council and community engagement on the use and fiscal impacts of the applicable equipment from the previous year. In conclusion, staff recommends the city council conduct a public hearing and introduce the attached ordinance adding in chapter 9.56 to the Daly City Municipal Code adopting the military equipment use policy for the Daly City Police Department. Staff is available to provide any additional information desired by the mayor or council members. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Before we open up the public um, hearing, can we, I would like to open up to my colleagues. All right, I guess seeing um, no hands from my colleagues, I would like to have a motion to open up the, um, opening up the public hearing.
Motion to open public hearing.
Second.
First, we have a second by Councilmember Pamela De Giovanni. Uh, Leilani, do we have anybody here to speak on this specific agenda item?
For those members of the public who wish to comment on item number 14, please click the raise hand feature to speak on that agenda item. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand. We have no hands raised, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Um, can we get a, a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion to close public hearing.
We have a first by Councilmember Justin Manala, we have a second.
Okay.
A second by Councilmember Pamela De Giovanni. Can we have a council member to introduce the ordinance, please?
Actually, Mr. Mayor, we, we just need a motion for the city attorney to read the title.
Oh, man, I just, I keep on crossing out, okay, sorry about that. Can I get a motion for the city attorney to read by title only?
Oh, moved. Glenn Sylvester.
Okay.
You have a first and a second, all those in favor say aye.
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 Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, this is an ordinance of the city of Daly City adding chapter 9.56 to the Daly City Municipal Code regarding police acquisition and use of military equipment. And we will entertain an introduction of the ordinance.
I happily um,
That's what I was gonna say.
Introduce.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. Okay, so moving along to public appearances and oral communications.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, if I can make a final comment?
Yes, go for it.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
I, uh, Assistant Chief uh, Christensen, I want to thank you for the update. I had some concerns, but I see that any acquisition of potential military equipment, uh, you know, I'm against getting tanks. But any uh, type of military equipment, what you stated was it'd have to come before council. And uh, I think that was a defining moment for me, so I want to thank you for your clarification and your report. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Glenn Sylvester? Chief Christensen? Aren't a few, you own, okay.
I was gonna have to respond to anything, but.
Oh, no, I think you were good.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay. Sorry, my contact is like coming out and I'm like trying to fix. Councilmember Justin Manala.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to say, uh, thank you so much for uh, the extensive presentation on this and all your work on, on this. Act, Acting Chief Christensen. Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you, I appreciate it.
And we have Councilmember Pamela De Giovanni.
Thank you. I guess in concurrence with everyone else, I want to thank the Acting Chief, who did a very thorough job, page after page, and made sure that everything was, was done and complete. Very proud to have you as our Acting Chief. And thank you very much. Thank you for all your hard work. Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Pam De Giovanni. Thank you, Acting Chief Christensen for um, the work that you do for our city and DCPD. Okay, now we're moving on. Okay, um, the public appearances and oral communications. I'll hand it off to Leilani.
In accordance with the Brown Act laws governing regular meetings, the city council is not authorized to speak to or take action on any other items in this meeting. Members of the public who wish to comment may click the raise hand feature to raise your hand to speak. For those joining by phone, press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. It is important to note that staff will announce the name of the last person whose hand was raised upon calling for public comment, and that person will be the last verbal comment. If any additional speakers queue up after the last called speaker, the mayor may continue to allow public comment if time allows. Otherwise, public comment may be emailed to cityclerk@dailycity.org to be added to the record and shared with the city council. When you hear your name called, staff will send you a request to unmute your microphone and you may begin speaking. Each person will receive a maximum of two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When your two minutes have been reached, we ask that you wrap up your comments. Speakers not in compliance will be muted. Any use of profanity will result in the speaker being muted immediately. And I see no hands raised, Mayor.
Thank you, Leilani. So moving down to appointments, board commissions, membership committee appointments, are there any um, appointments? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move to reports. So council committee reports, are there any council committee reports? Councilmember Pamela De Giovanni.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I'd like to report that, uh, speaking of public works, that the engineers and um, at the JFK Elementary School, we did a short cipher to school with the county. And they did it at the JFK off of Guadalupe, because of all the traffic in that particular areas for parents and teachers and Matt Harris were there. And the walk audit will be uh, finished and delivered with options and feedback. And uh, again, our public works is fantastic. They were out there for hours listening and putting feedback in to Shirley and Kevin and everyone, thank you. I'd like to also report that um, on a city council report that is also a Jewish American Heritage Month, because May is so full, I completely understand that to all those in our community and elsewhere. And then, of course, we all know with you being a professor, teacher's appreciation month, which is educators, Mr. Mayor. Uh, with the, we really need to make sure we don't forget about them as well. And then, I know you're going to a depth, and I'll um, defer to the mayor. But um, um, we, we attended the Progress Seminar. And a part of that Progress Seminar, and I'll let my colleagues also um, fill in as well. Um, that a part of it was for the first time was the um, Nancy McGee for education. Because she was trying to push a child first in San Mateo County for the public education. And it was the first time that they had attended the, with Hector Camacho, the um, the Progress Seminar. And I thought it was a great mixture of all of us together, along with the chambers and businesses, where we all interacted with one another and other electeds. And uh, there were many, many workshops, and I'm sure they'll elaborate. And at the assembly, I'll defer to the mayor especially, for there was a big component about mental health with a huge presentation. And he will deliver and let our public know about our Mental Health Awareness Month and what will be coming um, to our city as far as different trainings and what will be available to everyone, everyone in our community for free. So I'll defer that to our mayor for that especially. And that it's really important that we're going to be doing May, but this is just going to be the beginning. And um, again, I'll defer that to my, the mayor as well. I think that's it for this uh, this time, because I'll let you and my other council member, Manala was there as well for the weekend, to fill in all the different workshops that we all attended. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Pamela De Giovanni. Um, are there any other council committee reports?
Mayor, are we in council committee reports or city council?
We're on council, council committee.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
I apologize.
It's okay. And we're all anxious to finish. Yeah, we'll get to it.
Thank, thank you.
Okay. Um, if there is no more council committee reports, we'll move on to item 16, city council reports, now we can talk about it, so.
Yeah, sorry about that.
No problem.
Mr. Mayor, um, I, I defer to you if you'd like to uh, lead with your um, announcement for um, why we're wearing the green ribbons.
Oh, yes.
And uh, appreciate your leadership in this.
Yes, so um, we're wearing these uh, green um, ribbons for Mental Health Awareness Month. Um, and just to show our solidarity um, with the different agencies. Um, and I, I think it's across um, the nation, a nation for um, solidarity. We have like some um, city councils, city buildings that will light up their, their uh, city halls green, um, there's folks that will have like lawn um, lawn signs that show our, our solidarity in terms of mental health awareness. Um, and we're, we're taking steps as well as the city to provide mental health uh, first aid. Um, the best, I guess metaphor that I can say is that um, we trying to provide education and certify, certification for mental health first aid is kind of like if a person was choking, you're not going to call a surgeon to, you know, address a person choking. You're gonna call a person that does first aid, emergency medical technicians, firefighters that can go right away to serve a person that's choking. So if a person was going through a whole mental health um, episode, we don't have to go to a, a therapist, but we have everyday people that can um, address the situation. And I would like to um, bring in. address the situation. And I would like to, um, bring in also Stephen, because I know, I think that we have, uh, some dates that we have that we're, um, providing in the future for mental health, uh, first aid. Uh, I don't know, uh, Stephen, if you can provide, provide those dates for us?
We are still scheduling those dates.
Great. Okay, thank you, Stephen, but we're working on the way. Um, I, it's, we're part of this whole, uh, San Mateo Mental Health Initiative where, um, we're in partnership with many cities that are all trying to address the issues of mental health, especially coming, um, while we're still battling COVID-19 and what happened in terms of our isolation from people. It's, it has played a huge role. There were statistics that were saying that there were, um, the calls for mental health resources expanded, expand exponentially, the need for it. Um, we have places like the Daly City Health Clinic and, uh, the Daly City, um, Youth Health Center that are all working together to address these issues of mental health in our community. And it's not just, um, you know, we're, we're trying to address like people's wellness, people's way of finding themselves as, uh, their humanity, their, their, um, and addressing these, these, um, kind of like structural and putting it in, in, in the, in the, uh, as, as a, a main issue, because I think like, um, for myself and colleagues and other mayors in up and down the county, they've been vulnerable, sharing about what has happened to them, and I think that shows great strength and leadership from myself and my colleagues up and down the county that are putting mental health at the forefront of our city agendas, by putting together mental health, uh, first aid, um, classes. So if, if you or anybody that are listening, watching, that want to be first aid, uh, certified, please look at, look for, um, our Daly City social media handles, our Daly City website for those different things. I think that's about it for the mental health things, but I would like to also share the wealth of, in terms of participating in the Progress Seminar, where we also participated in many different sessions, and it was sessions that looked at, um, advancing equity, working with, um, people in labor. You know, we had people like Julie Lind, um, and Marsha Mia Sessions that talked about making partnerships with community orders, grassroots organizations, and looking at like how we can look forward or have future, uh, future-minded thinking when it comes to understanding labor. The first ever session in the Progress Seminar in its fifty-plus years that put education as one of the, the workshops and, you know, there was a session called "Education is Everyone's Business: Thriving Students, Thriving Community." Uh, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni mentioned it in terms of, uh, we had the superintendent schools, Nancy McGee, Hector Camacho, who was a trustee of San Mateo County of Education, and, you know, what are ways that we can put some of our, um, students in the forefront when we think about, um, policies and moving forward as a city? And I'll, if anybody else wants to share as well, we've had even some innovative, um, things that are happening. I know there was a thing in Half Moon Bay, um, where they purchased a, a hotel and made that into a hel-, um, a homeless shelter. So innovative ways where there's partnerships between cities and community organizations such as, uh, Mid Penn and, uh, Life Moves. We had Aubrey Merriman, Nevada Merriman, and the city manager of Half Moon Bay, Bob Nisbit, that talked about how they were able to put this together, especially during COVID-19. What's my missing? And I'll open up to other colleagues if they want to share. I, I still have a lot more on the list here. Oh, and there was another session on venture capitalists. So, uh, we had people, um, Dylan James, that was the vice president of NASDAQ, to Vishal Deverma, who was a general partner for Edgewood Ventures, and they talked about different ways of looking at, uh, different avenues to strengthen economies and business ventures up and down the state. And there's other lists of things that we've done over the past month. We had the Daly City Laureate that we had on April twenty eighth, uh, two thousand twenty-two, and we awarded our second, uh, Daily City Poet Laureate. Um, it was put together by the Daly City, um, Public Library Associates, DCPLA. Um, I was also on, on May fifth, um, last week was, um, National Small Business Week, and it was put together by our Daly City Coma Chamber of Commerce. I attended, um, their last event um, at Mahone's, Malloy's, my bad, Malloy's, Malloy's, and was able to attend, um, the last section of that event. And I think, um, what is showing is that there's a certain synergy that is happening with our small businesses, and I appreciate the work that they're doing as well. So I'll open up to my colleagues, um, for city council reports as well. Councilmember Justin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I, I appreciate, um, the synopsis that, that you provided for Progress Seminar. Um, you basically, um, shared all of the workshops we attended, um, uh, during that time, which, um, I think they were very mindful to now consolidate to four sessions instead of six. Um, but you definitely, uh, were able to share, uh, all the different topics, so thank you for that. Um, I just wanted to say that that was amazing to have, um, the youth poet laureates and, um, all of those that applied in the chambers, um, on, and to hear you as mayor, um, also provide your poem to the students. I think that, um, that was really special, uh, for young people to hear, um, your poetry, um, in that space, um, right? And in that chamber. Um, also wanted to say that, um, it was great to be around all the private, public, and nonprofits, um, sectors that came together, um, in San Mateo County with the, within the Progress Seminar. I think, um, it was definitely, um, a while, like, I think almost two years or so where this, uh, seminar, um, was put, um, only in the virtual realm. Um, and so I also wanted to share that, um, I attended the California Bay Area Five County API Elected Official Summit, um, who was all, with present was Attorney General Rob Bonta and State Treasurer Fiona Ma. Um, and I also wanted to invite, this is future-wise, um, folks, um, that, uh, want to, um, support the vagina monologues, um, this time around with the Filipino Women's Network, the, um, it's, it's highlight to stop, um, Asian hate on May twenty ninth at seven PM at the Herb's Theater. Um, as May, thank you, uh, Mr. Mayor, uh, as May has Mother's Day, and then also, uh, Asian Pacific Island Heritage Month. Um, you know, this is going to be, um, an opportunity to support, um, our women and also, uh, stand up against, uh, gender violence. Um, also V, formerly Ev Ensler, uh, will read a new piece calling for solidarity and, um, ac- action, um, to join efforts to stop Asian hate. Um, also, um, was able to, uh, join one of the events, uh, like you, Mr. Mayor, with the DCH, uh, uh, Daly City Coma Chamber of Commerce, um, at Coma Cafe, um, wasn't able to make it to the US Bank one in Daly City, but hopped over to, um, Coma, um, in support of that. Um, and, um, yeah, I, I think that's all of, uh, my reports. I thank you for the time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Justin Manalo. Um, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Yeah, um, thank you, Mr. Mayor, for that report of the Progress Seminar as well. I just wanted to say congratulations that, that night of DCPLA. This is our second poet laureate, and I noticed that they also were an expression of our AAPI, even though that wasn't talked about that night, the community. And afterwards, one of them, um, I shared with me, it was the first poem she had ever written. And although she wasn't the winner, I won't out her, but to think that that was her very first poem ever, humbly to say that, and that she can come back next year and try again, that tells us that it was the pandemic, the COVID, and has spurred so much, and even though there's a lot of negativity, it's a way there, I guess, a coping mechanism as well. Um, and if that gives them the coping mechanism to be out that creativity, then it's up to us and to our community to support that. I think that that's where we wrap our arms around them and give them that first aid, and give them those resources, and give those families, and give those young people, even the little ones in elementary school. I saw something on Sixty Minutes, elementary school, thinking of suicide, and speaking about it on Sixty Minutes yesterday. A nine-year-old openly. So that, that is real. Like you said, it's real. So these are some serious things that we have ahead of us, well, not even ahead of us, but now, um, to recognize it and then really put everything we have into it. Um, I know, I believe we're all in support of that because it's, um, the healing of our community. It's about saving their lives. And the beauty of things like the poet laureate is a venue that we can offer. And thank Victoria and Aline Castaneda for them to have that opportunity is, is beautiful. So thank you very much. To all of them, they did a beautiful job. Congratulations. And to the one young lady, it was your first poem. Won't be your last, and keep it going. So thank you very much. Thank you for your opportunity. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni. All right, um, Councilmember Justin Manalo.
I'm sorry, I'd be for.
Oh, good.
I have a couple more. Um, so it just, you know how weeks fuse together. Um, I, I just wanted to share that I was able to join, um, for Affordable Housing Month. Um, uh, the other day in regards to kicking off, um, Affordable Housing Month with the Housing Leadership Council of San Mateo County, um, the other day, and be able to see, uh, one of, um, their affordable housing, um, units that they did, um, called Monterra. Um, and so it was a sixty-eight unit development in San Mateo, but really being able to see also the types of housing being built across, uh, the county. And so, um, you know, with, um, other housing advocates, it was, uh, great to also see what they have done on that, uh, side of the county. I wanted to share with that. And then lastly, um, I wanted to, in, in, in alignment with, um, Asian Pacific Island Heritage Month, um, was able to, um, do a really, really quick trip with my daughter, Giselle, um, to, um, LA and in, in line with, uh, API, his, uh, Heritage Month. I think that, um, it was wonderful to see that, um, there was a large, um, cultural, um, kind of arch that was done in LA in historic Filipino town. Um, and it's like the largest, um, cultural monument in all of the United States. Um, and so, you know, with May, May being API Heritage Month, um, it's, uh, these moments that, um, when we talk about also earlier with Legacy Filipino Martial Arch, it's being able to also see yourselves in, in, in community. And, um, it was just wonderful to support other Filipino-American communities, uh, within California. Um, and share that moment with my daughter. I'm so busy sometimes to have those bonding, bonding moments. And so I, I hope she remembers. I doubt she will, but I'll, she'll have photos, but wanted to share that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I am officially done. I'm not going to forget anything else. Thank you.
Thank you so much, just Councilmember Justin Manalo. Um, historical Filipino town has a, a special place in my heart. I think that was like, when I was in college, that was like the first neighborhood that I, um, worked, um, intern, my internships and being entrenched in that community of, um, P Town, Los Angeles, or historical Filipino town of LA. Now seeing pictures of old friends of mine with you, I was like, oh, my God, my words are all crossing, so, and thank you. Thank you for your, um, announcements.
Mr. Mayor, I was like, hey, I have, I, I see your, 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 your friend and colleague and someone from back then. But I think, I don't know if that's possible, but wouldn't it be amazing to have an arch like that? Um, it's Daly City. I'm just putting it out there. The, the artist already made it, and, um, I think the cost was already cussed it out, but I'm just saying like, it's, it's when, you know, you don't, you don't want to have to reinvent the wheel. Um, so maybe that's something down, down the line, since at one point, um, Daly City was, uh, had the largest, uh, amount of Filipino-Americans within, uh, the contiguous US at one point. I think it's, I think it's LA now, but just want to, uh, put that on the table, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Just. Appreciate that. Um, so moving on to, um, staff reports, I'll hand it over to Shauna.
Thank you, Mayor Dos McBwale and council members. So I'll be brief, um, and then I'm going to hand it over to Assistant City Manager Stephen Stolti. But I wanted to hit it off by saying I, um, echo the mayor and council members' comments on the Youth, uh, Poet Laureate event. It was so amazing, um, not only because I have two young, you know, daughters that age. Um, one of them who went to high school with, with one of the, with the last year's winner. Um, but it was, you know, Stephen and Leilani and I went and we're like, why did that feel so great? Well, it was the first event that we've had in over two years in the council chambers, and, um, it felt normal, and not only was it, you know, nice to see everybody, but it was nice to see everybody in that really positive environment. So I'm thankful for that. Um, and the reason I just ta-, uh, touched base on that is because, um, I'm going to hand it over to Stephen to talk a little bit about how we are segueing into reopening City Hall. And we've been open to the public by way of, you know, staff has been there and has been doing online appointments and those kinds of things, but we are opening up to the public next week. So Stephen, I'll let you get into the details a little bit about that.
Okay, thank you. So, um, next week, we are, we are actually reopening City Hall for walk-up in-person services. It's going to be Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday to start. Um, and this is like, like Shauna said, this is a change for some departments that required advanced appointments. So now the public will be able to just walk into City Hall. Our hours will be eight AM to five PM. Um, and there is a special note for the cashier. Um, those are payments related to planning or building or code enforcement, finance, um, public works. That will be available eight thirty to three thirty. Um, and we'll post all of this information on our website as well. And, uh, we will plan to return to full five-day in-person services Monday to Friday in August. So, um, as you already know, our employees have worked throughout the entire pandemic at City Hall and our other off-site offices. And, um, the majority have done so for the entire pandemic, actually. So this announcement is just about welcoming the public back to City Hall, uh, Tuesdays through Thursdays, and we're staying in line with other cities on the peninsula as well. Um, and then just another reminder, tonight you also adopted, um, another thirty-day resolution to continue to allow teleconference meetings. Uh, we are still working with our tech vendor to install the hybrid meeting equipment in council chambers, and we'll have a better update for you at the first meeting in June. Um, and we, we will still test that system first before going live with a public meeting. So, thank you.
All right, we're, we're set. Thank you for that time.
Great. Thank you so much, Shauna. Thank you so much, Stephen. Um, can't wait. And opening up City Hall again. Um, so moving to our last, um, part of the agenda, a German memory, I have a couple. Um, so I'm going to start off with, uh, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, let me begin by closing a German memory of a great American named Norman Manetta. Norma Yoshio Manetta, November twelfth, nineteen thirty-one, passed May third, twenty twenty-two. I'm going to tell you a little bit about their early life because it will remind everyone about the Japanese. I'm going to tell you a little bit about the early life because it will remind everyone about the Japanese internment camp. Mineta was born in San Jose, California, to Japanese immigrant parents who were banned from becoming American citizens at the time of the Asian Exclusion Act. During World War II, the Mineta family was interned for several years at Area 24, South Barrack, Unit B, at the Heart Mountain Internment Camp in Cody, Wyoming, along with thousands of the Japanese immigrants and Japanese Americans. Upon arrival to the camp, which might not be important to some people, Mineta, who was a small child, a baseball fan, had all his baseball bat confiscated by authorities, which he never had returned. So also about this great man was he served as American, just a politician. As a member of the Democratic Party, Mineta served in the United States Cabinet for President Bill Clinton, a Democrat, and George W. Bush, a Republican. Mineta served as mayor of San Jose from 1971 to 75. He was a member of the United States House of Representatives, representing California from 1975 until 1995. Mineta serves as the United States Secretary of Commerce during the final months of Bill Clinton's presidency. He was the first person of East Asian descent to serve as a US Cabinet Secretary. As the United States Secretary of Transportation for President Bush, Mineta was the only Democratic Cabinet Secretary in the Bush administration. This is how much this man was respected across both aisles. During his tenure as the Secretary of Transportation, Mineta oversaw the creation of the Transportation Security Administration in response to the September 11th attacks that had occurred during his tenure. On June 23rd, 2006, Mineta announced his resignation after more than five years as Secretary of Transportation effective July 7th, 2006, making him the longest-serving Secretary of Transportation in the department's history. A month later, a public relations firm announced that Mineta would join them as a partner in 2010. It was announced that Mineta would join the LNL Energy as a vice chairman. To note, though, he was given the Presidential Medal of Honor by George Bush as well. This is a great, important lesson for every child in history to know that this man and what they suffered in the Japanese internment camp from the history and how he rose up and became one of the greatest known, as we know, that San Jose Airport is named after him in America. So that's him as well. Then I also would like to close in a German memory. If you give me one second.
Councilmember Di Giovanni, if I may, on Secretary Mineta. I'd like to also pay my respects to the family. I remember being able to meet Secretary Mineta and, and, and his also advocacy for the Filipino World War II veterans. And his leadership on that. I was much younger then, but I will never forget that he was also an advocate for our heroes and heroines, our Filipino World War II veterans, and also such an amazing leader in our community and been able to break many barriers as far as his role. And so with respect to the family, thank you.
Yeah, definitely, definitely. And he also, as you said, with your Filipino World War II veterans, he has such respect, as you know, because you had a chance to meet him, that he was such an advocate for, for justice as well. So he was just really, we need more people like him, and he emulates what we really stand for. And yeah, thank you for that. And then I also would like to close in memory for Cedric B. Greer Senior, who is in Daly City. He was born April the 8th, 1961, and he passed away March 27th, 2022. He passed away suddenly at home, and his wife Sandra and her son was, happened to be home at that, that time while his father passed away suddenly. He was a retired employee of San Francisco City and County SFMTA and United Airlines. He worked at both of these for over 20 years and had just recently retired and was trying to figure out what he really wanted to do. And he was actually healthy until the moment he passed. Both of them and their families have lived in our family, in our Daly City family for 23 years, and his beloved widow-wife and his son Cedric Jr. Sandra, as you know, has been a great advocate in our public schools as well for many, many years. So with that, we send heartfelt condolences. And for the mayor, I'll be sending you the address as well. They live at Top of the Hill. So Sandra, I know you're watching tonight and express our condolences of the sudden passing of your husband. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember Pamela Di Giovanni. I also have another German memory, Councilmember Justin Manalo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Condolences to Grace David for her brother, Remi Hio, Remy, Kalung Sang, who was active at the Our Lady of Perpetual Health in Daly City Music Ministry. He was a lead guitarist. He was 79 years old. It was his first time back to the, visit the Philippines since he came to America in 1974 and decided to visit there after he was diagnosed with stage four lung and brain cancer. He moved to Texas for a few months, but he was not happy until he came back to live in Daly City. This was his home. So with deepest condolences to Grace David and her family.
May I, may I say something, Mr. Mayor?
Go right ahead.
Yeah, I would like to say, yep, as well for Grace David. They had, when they had the services at OLPH, actually Grace David sang for her brother. So is the, the beauty of her, her family's musical talent came out and the passion that she sang the song. I know that probably all of you on my council are familiar with, Intagalog. That's they sing at the end is usually a traditional song about how much a loved one is loved and lost and will always be with them. She sang that at the very last. And I'd like to send my condolences for Grace and for having me there and for the reception, which is very beautiful. And her meeting her other brother as well and her family. So may God bless the memory of your brother and continue to bless you as well. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. And with that, let's give a time and space for a moment of silence. Meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Have a safe couple of weeks and we'll see you then. Goodbye, everybody.